Okay, I'll call this November 20th meeting. We're all commissioners and the county attorney present. First on the agenda. Thank you.
How are you?
Hello, Michael.
I'm here to introduce Chris again from Town and Wealth Engineering for Eastman Discos. One of our programs with him and has a reservation. We were on second reading the last time. He's got a signed document. I think we're ready to go tonight. So, Chris, just.
Hi, everyone.
Hi.
So, last month, we talked about having an interlocal agreement with the town of Kewaunee in the amount of $500,000. With that, that is to offset the cost of a bond or a band, a bond anticipated note. We do have terms of the agreement to take effect on December 31st of 2023 and then payment to be back on June 1st of 2024. I have ran this by the town's attorney, Andrew, and then by Holly as well. They have no issues with it. I don't know if the commissioners have a copy of this or if you'd like to review this.
I think, yeah, I don't, I just have it on computer here.
Okay.
And you did go to the council and everything was okay?
The council is scheduled for tomorrow night.
Oh, tomorrow?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay. Hearing that, then we just have this resolution to look through this by title. This is our third reading. It's the interlocal agreement corporation, their corporate agreement regarding advanced funds for the town of Kewaunee. Does anybody have any questions on? This is going to be the third reading I've heard this long, so. You have any questions over there? Okay. Any more questions? Then I entertain a motion, contingent upon the council funding it for this $500,000 short-term loan, zero interest loan to the town of Kewaunee. Still moved?
Second.
A little bigger. Motion carries through.
Thank you. I have the statutory document here. Is the honor to appear to attest this, then? Thanks.
If you want to leave, you can have to do that soon.
Why don't we do that in the morning? Do you have a seat over there tomorrow?
Okay.
Thank you for your time.
The only other thing I wanted to make a quick update on, which I've spent the last two weeks with the non-stationary. We had a meeting down in Kokomo last week where we reduced programs, ten to a county. I said ten. The range basically in housing, there's the industrial park. There's a mobile clinic that the hospital wants to produce for Fulton County each two days a week. That's basically the subject matter on all of them. We have a meeting on the 29th in Kokomo where all six counties will get together. We're going to reduce it to five programs a county so that we have only thirty that we have to deal with at that point. Then the state will judge which ones that they want to deal with, which ones fit the ready, which ones, how much money we've got, match funds, the whole thing. So, we'll reduce it down, like I said, to five. And then after that, on January the 11th, the state will actually be in the region, Golden County to County. I don't know what the times band's going to be, but they will actually visit, physically visit all five sites, like in Fulton County and the five down there and whatnot. And they will tell us what they accept and what they don't accept at that point. So, this is where we're sitting. And just so that you understand the way that this thing was running, they're running up by the seat of their pants, so everything I just told you is subject to change. And that's my report.
Thank you.
It's okay. We have. Okay, we have the ambulance contract thing we'll, as we deal with right now. This is from Ritter Strategic Services regarding medical services, the ambulance project. On Tuesday, September 5th, the commissioners published the specifications for emergency medical ambulance services for Fulton County. The request for proposal resulted in three qualified providers submitting proposals for the project. With the assistance of commissioners, a working group consisting of community members and elected officials was established to assist Ritter Strategic Services with the project. Working group members included Gail Karas, Rebecca Hartsford, Rick Randstad, Ron Dittman, Paul McKenny, Tom Butler, and Jeff Finkie. The working group reviewed each proposal, participated in vendor presentations that included interviews and equipment demonstrations and speaking with references. The working group met with county commissioners, county council members, and other interested parties to present its findings and answer questions regarding each proposal. Ritter Strategic Services reported that the working group had eliminated one vendor from consideration during the process. The two providers remaining include Hartland EMS and Luther EMS, both well-qualified to provide EMS services to Fulton County. An important factor to consider in each proposal is the financial obligation asked for by the providers. The annual stipend requests are Hartland EMS. It's a four-year contract for the, all four years is $1.35 million. Luther, '24 was a zero dollar. 2025 is $400,000. 2026 is $420,000. And 2027 is $441,000. Ritter Strategic Services requests that commissioners consider the information received throughout this project and make an informed decision to award EMS project to one qualified provider. Upon the award of the EMS project to a qualified provider, Ritter Strategic Services respectfully requests that commissioners approve Ritter Strategic Services to, in collaboration with legal counsel, to initiate contract negotiations with this successful provider. Discussion or anything?
I don't guess I do. I would like to thank the group that I worked with that he just mentioned. I think they did an excellent job. Appreciate all your hard work, I really do. Other than that.
I do think that we need to make sure that Ritter stays completely involved in the contract and then even after the contract is signed, that make sure that everything's held to proper standards. I guess for this. From Gail.
Yes, sir.
From my understanding, what we're going to be voting on is a service that we will enter into contract negotiations with, but it is, it is not the final contract at this minute.
That is correct.
Okay. So.
That's a good thing.
Do you have any questions or any comments? Okay. So, we have, like I said, Luther and Hartland. Is anybody on a recognition or a right to recommend?
Luther.
Okay. You'll make a motion.
I'll make a motion that we enter into contract negotiations with Luther.
I second it. Okay. Do we have any discussion? Can anybody reply?
Any of the committee got anything they want to say or interject?
I got one thing. I think it speaks volume when our whole work families here and represented by police, fire, EMS, 911, coroner, and, of course, our town board's representation in the meeting with the public. You heard from the people and when the politics get in the way versus the people, your work family you work with, it's hard to make that decision. And so, with us being, I mean, doing our due diligence, it was hard doing the negative and positive between the group. I will tell you that. So, this is what you got when they all show up. And that's what it is like when they work in the field, so.
Anybody else?
Okay. Like I said, this is a vote to let Ritter entertain or get into the contract negotiations with Luther. This is not a vote approval yet until we all agree on the contract. So, any other questions from public? Okay. Well, I'm paid with that. Motion carries through. So, we will let Barry know and move forward to the next step.
Okay.
Hopefully, we can get on that pretty quick.
I do want to thank everybody for participation and all the hard work and the time we put into this, so. Okay. Thank you. Okay, now we'll move on to department updates. Start, Matt John Geier. Hi, we have. You, give me your job.
I've got a few things for you tonight. First thing I got is an oversized and overweight permit, approval for that. Stevenson Crane requesting, two permits, actually. First one is to deliver to the County Line Landville. They're requesting to go from St. Mary 110 and Use Old 31 to 7922 north. They're going to deliver. The first one is on a 42-foot trailer, eight foot, six inches wide, 13 foot, three inches tall, weighing 150,500 pounds, before the 26th of November. And the second is the same, same route, same location, that's 80 foot, 10 feet tall, or 10 feet wide, 13 and three, 13 feet, three inches tall. Just asking permission, Use Old 31, basically, move to Landville.
Of course, you can draw on that.
No, not very far.
Not very far, so.
More of a normality than anything, but, you know.
I'll make a motion to approve it.
Senator, motion finished through.
You have an idea of the work activities we're doing. Of course, we're running the brush cutter. We've got to go over the Algonabe township right now, making some headway over there. Right now, we're shouldering. We've got an aspirer machine ready and we're putting some shoulder on the side of the roads that we're milling. Or that we pug, I'm sorry. We're using millings that we got off of the two crossing roads. Got finished here this last week. Finn and Brown, they're putting shoulder on those right now. We got them straight there last week, so. Projects got done. Also, the bridge, as you know, got opened up last week. There was a lot of calls and thank yous on that. I imagine you guys got to do too, so. I thought you've done a very nice job on the bridge. There's got to be a lot of compliments on, on the roads and the bridge.
Yep.
Lot of, lot of projects come to conclusion here in the last week and this week, so. Which brings us to getting ready for winter, so.
Your favorite time of year?
Absolutely.
Can't wait for the snow.
Favorite time of year to see go. So, we'll hurry up and watch that disappear. Fuel contract. I sent you guys, we talked to you a little bit about it, want to get approval from you to lock in. I talked to Series Solutions last week. They recommend every year from December 31st this year, so start from January 1st to December 31st of 2024, we always lock in fuel. And that way, we know what our prices of fuel will be for the upcoming year and it doesn't fluctuate. Sheriff's Department, everybody knows exactly what we're paying for fuel. But they recommended that we go ahead and lock it down. One, one smart bomb over the Middle East could just really play havoc with our fuel price next year, so. There's a lull in fuel prices right now, but from January to March 31st, I could lock our on-road and off-road diesel for $287.5. From April 1st to December 31st, I could lock it in for $281. And then our gasoline from January to July, I could lock it in for $250. And from August 1st to December 31st, I could lock it in for $231. So, if I can get your glass engine out, I'll go ahead and lock our contracts with Series.
Second. I'm paid with.
We'll get that done. Sent you this afternoon a couple of agreements. Holler, did you get a chance to look at those?
I did not.
I'll give it to you here real quick. I just made it.
They go with my junk also. I don't know why, what you do. Your junk. Who knows? So, I didn't know, so.
She's nice.
I'll ask Cindy. She, she usually can do those things, okay?
While you look those over, basically, the first one is a task order for next year for community crossings. It'd be for USI. Look at my copy here, so I know what I'm talking about, but.
Community crossings for $25,000, was that right?
Yes. I couldn't remember it right now. For them to help us put together, like they do every year, put those together and help us get everything ready to submit and go through the process. And then the second one is just a supplement agreement to continue our on-call agreement with them for projects.
That didn't have a price on it, right?
Right. So, it'd be a continuation of what we already have. I knew you were going to ask me what that is. I didn't. And it came so late in the day, I didn't have time to look it up.
I shouldn't have looked for cash behind you. I don't want to lie to you. I don't want to offer the heat.
It was the same as last year?
Yes.
You got to approve last year's.
That's what both of us saw. Make sure Holly got a copy.
Yep.
You have a motion to approve the authorization to proceed for the USI for $25,000.
Second.
Motion carries through now.
The next thing I have. Oh, I'm sorry.
We've got to get the supplemental. And then we'll do the, we have a motion for the supplemental group at the USI for the on-call. Price is the same as last year.
Second.
Motion carries through. Okay, John. Thank you.
So, the next thing I have, sent you a copy of a quote. Been talking with you for probably the last four or five months about the new TACO. The one we have now currently is 2013, so it's ten years old. It's got 5,600 hours on it. It's pretty well wore out. Looking at trying to get a new one. So, they gave me a price. We went through Sourcewell, which we've done on other pieces of equipment, which is, how do I want to say it, Hollis? Government bidding. Sourcewell. It's the government bid.
It's what this is. They're the individuals that.
Bid it out.
Bid it out, yes.
Anyway, list price is $176,380. Sourcewell discount, which is 35%, takes off $61,733. Brings it down to, anyway, the total price would be $122,500 after you put in a thumb. New Holland would give us an extra $4,500 discount. So, $118,000 is the price, which I thought was actually a pretty good price compared to when we bid it at the last one, which was five years ago. We ended up not buying one. And that's not accounting a trade. So, this would be probably about a year out before we'd see it. They said those orders are anywhere from nine and 12 months out. They could come in earlier. He said, put the order in, you can see it in February, but it looks likely to look in October, November before you can see it.
So, you'd have to go ahead and order this and give them the okay tell them you've got to take it. Order this one, and when it comes in, you'll either get a price on your TACO, if you don't like that price from them, you can sell it outright like a lobster or whatever.
Is that fair? Yeah. Guess I'm asking for your permission to the council to figure out funding for it.
I'm good with it?
Go to the council and see what they think.
Which then brings me to the next situation I have, which is trucks.
Oh, God. It just kept getting worse and worse.
Yeah. TACO, the new one. So, in trucks. We have the bond. And we had a plan to get two, or a truck this year, or in '24, and a truck in '25. And $200,000 set aside for a truck. Probably have, and I can still most likely get a truck in '24. I could order two. It's going to be December. I can get one in December and one in January of '25. '24, I can get one delivered in December of '24 and the other, the second one, delivered in January of '25. So, that works great with the bond. I got $200,000 next year for one, $200,000 for one in '25. Problem is, the cost of trucks is now well over $200,000 apiece. They're now decked out exactly the same as what we ordered last time, and these are single axles. Last time, they were $213,000. So, my thought was I could come up with a $13,000, pretty easy. Now, they're going to be right around $290,000. That's a significant increase. And I've checked around with other counties, other truck dealers, and it's all pretty much the same.
The numbers are singles, right?
These are single axles. Hamons are significantly higher yet.
Well, our bond, we got problems.
I think we need to have a meeting and figure out what's going on with that bond, because I think you definitely get that bond, that bridge shouldn't be in that bond.
Correct.
That Ohio, they were that way in here. So, whether you guys want to have that or you want me to have a little John, set down a couple of us and figure out what's going on with the bond. Make sure the money's there.
Agree, disagree?
Oh, that would free up more than enough. That'd free up enough to pay for the TACO.
Yeah, well, just after, I mean.
Whether you want to do it or you want me to do it, or how you want to do it?
Well, you're excited, you might as well. You seem like you want to work it out. And we can, you might as well go to the council. I mean, tomorrow night, keep the ball rolling, but then.
My, I guess, biggest thing, I've got 13 months to figure out how to pay for them. I just need to get an order at this point.
I mean, the biggest thing, you don't want to get out of rotation too far.
We're looking at trucks that are.
But you would be.
Want to be pushing 14, 15 years old today.
You'd be a $180,000 shot if you ordered two of them, with your $200,000 in shot.
Yeah.
The worst part is, is trucks aren't going to be cheap. I'd say we'd have a contention between the council and finding money. I mean, you know, talk them tomorrow night, see if they don't agree. If you get to rushing, we're okay with the order, if the council agrees. Right? You guys okay?
Yep.
On the forward with that. And then the last thing I have, I've got an employee that's going to be down most of the winter and I'm needing some extra help. Just going to ask for some part-time help. Troy Coles has applied for part-time help. Passes 40, 50-plus to hire him.
I ran a new role here, right?
He's been helped. Be part-time, plenty of others being just a bit wider, which is what I need. I'm glad you got to do it, Ken.
I was going to tell you.
And that's basically all I have tonight, unless you have to go and have anything to read.
Is there a list you're drawing?
Nope.
Well, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Kathy, can we have some treasure?
Yep.
Okay. Sure. We have.
You're stuck with me tonight.
That's all right.
Sheriff Heisman had emailed you guys the October monthly reports last Friday. Any questions on that that I can answer? The sheriff's office invoiced $61,636.52 for out accounting inmate housing for the month of October. Any questions on that?
Say that number one more time. That is, is that including federal or not?
Yes. Yep. An ordinance has been drafted to allow public donations for the K-9 program. In the past years, we had funneled the K-9 donations received through the FOP and are dependent upon them for approval to use the money. This will streamline the process and keep it all within the county and the sheriff's office. We are accepting merit deputy positions, or I'm sorry, we are accepting merit deputy applications through December 29th, 2023. Senior Deputy Matt Craig has accepted a position with Bourbon Police Department. His last day with the county is November 29th of 2023. And we want to publicly thank him for his 15 years of service to the citizens of Fulton County and wish him the best of luck in his new position. We will be hosting a luncheon at the sheriff's office, November 29th at 12 o'clock, and everyone's welcome to come. We are still waiting on the two new TACOs to be outfitted at Cops Gear. They have assured us that that will be done by the end of the year. And we have completed interviews for the animal control position. We will review and present our recommendation at the December 4th commissioners' meeting. QCC, which is our medical provider. QCC, which is our medical provider, they have, they provide medical bill scrubbing for off-site services for the inmates. We have been invoiced a hundred and fifty-four thousand, six hundred and eighty-seven dollars and thirty-three cents so far this year. The scrubbing has reduced those changes by eighty-nine percent. So from a hundred and fifty-four thousand, they've taken off a hundred and thirty-eight thousand, five hundred and fifty-five dollars and sixty-five cents, which has left the county responsible for sixteen thousand, one hundred and thirty-one dollars and sixty-eight cents. And thank you to IT and Chad for coordinating, getting a lift to the courthouse to replace the exterior camera. Any questions?
I guess not.
Thank you.
I saw that win this week.
Chad, any other?
I don't have anything.
Gail, are you ready, nine-one-one?
Thank you. I am going to start off with the radio project, just in case some of my constituents here leave. We have been working together in a group, a volunteer group, the sheriff's department, and some of our towns, probably all of our towns, maybe they just haven't been to you at Kiwanah side of it. But Rebecca has been in touch with me, and like I said, the sheriff and some of the responders, Tom Butler here from the fire, Bronx Fire Department. But we have collaborated together as an LEPC group and also as a responder group because of the purchase of the eight-hundred radios. We have done our due diligence with going, setting through, I don't know, a demonstration with Motorola in the spring. We have sent through a distribution and a trial with Harris tape radios. I don't know who has tested those, but I have not. Dave has been a part of those groups when we've had these meetings. I think some of you have been to those luncheons. And then in the last couple of weeks, we, not J and K, in reference to a Kenwood that we feel that will probably represent the county responders. We want to all keep the same brand model moving forward in this realm. And correct me if I'm wrong, guys, anybody that's been at this meeting, but it's around twenty-seven hundred dollars, and that comes with my battery and the portable itself. Now, the mobiles are just a little bit more in that. I think we're, the mobiles that go on the vehicle.
They're sort of tiny.
I believe so. So with that being said, some of the fire departments are needing to purchase their equipment, and they're going to also be putting in funds so they can get more than what was allocated on the EMA, LEPC side that we try to collaborate with that S B S P grant. So I tried to put together like thirty radios for the county on the EMA side. And with that being said, at twenty-six, twenty-seven hundred dollars, I think that's feasible. The sheriff's department is trying the Kenwoods out currently. Kiwanah Fire Department, I know, uses Kenwoods and has been using it on the VHS side. Tom Butler is an advocate of that. If this is a group collaboration, then they're all in agreeance to moving forward. So the end goal was twenty-twenty-five, that they're all be on the eight-hundred system. So with that being said, I know I came to you a couple, maybe a month ago, and asked about money to allocate for the volunteer groups, approximately a hundred fifty thousand or less, and I believe we can do that. And not to speak for Travis, but I told him I was gonna present it for him this evening. He's looking at twenty radios to purchase. So we'd like to purchase all in a big group.
So the twenty radios would be separate from the number you just gave us?
Correct.
Correct?
So, yeah, so what we want to do is put a whole invoice together for the county on the, you know, the fire department side. Any first responder that... Any first responder that needs that equipment for the county uses, so we can get more bang for our buck. And we don't want to buy all brand new radios, because we need to rotate those out. So we don't want to replace all of our radios at one time, costing that large expense. So I believe we can get it done for right, like right around a hundred thousand, and maybe I'm gonna use some nine-one-one funds. I think Travis has a little bit of funds to use, and I know, like I said, Tom, Rebecca wants to add more to the fleet. They're in desperate need as well, so it's been a group collaboration in this entire year on many of the aspects that's needed for our response.
Sounds good.
Now, I will not be at council tomorrow, but we do need to move sooner than later on something. But if we could have an agreement of some sort, maybe we can finalize that the first of December, we can get that.
So just a grant for you to move forward?
On the side of the contract.
Yeah, we don't have the exact number, exact dollar amount and everything yet, right?
Well, I want to make sure Travis has what he needs, just on the county side. I know I want to provide for the volunteer fire departments on their side.
Andy, here's one pager to, and Lewis is there?
Well, we kind of, with the pagers, we're kind of like, we don't know, but we wanna look at the radios first, because we just, we haven't tested the pagers out. So that might be, like, they're around seven to eight hundred dollars, we might have to look at that as a...
Except for that?
Yes. That's a whole nother beast with paging.
Gail, the price, twenty-six thousand, two hundred and seventy-three dollars. Talking with Kevin McCherry, he's expecting a three to six percent increase if we don't order by the end of the year. That, that's, it's gonna be the same radio, it's just gonna go up, it's like everything else, just like his dump trucks for the highway department. So that's kind of why she's pushing the sense of urgency to by the end of the year.
Yeah, so I will get those quotes to you, so you have them, but they could be slightly better with a larger number of equipment going up. We just don't have that running total. But they need to know what your buy-in would be to push it through the council, and I'll be known, whole group for tomorrow.
Sounds good. Yeah, I think we're all on board, it's gotta be done, I mean, it's just...
Right. So they're greatly appreciated, I was gonna send them an invite to come in the meeting, but I knew there was gonna be a full house. I couldn't take the hot flushes. So the hazard material emergency response plan, that needs to be approved by the LEPC. And I don't know how many years that Tom can agree to this as well, he's been the chair, I've been the chair, but I've never seen that come through to be approved by the LEPC then presented to you. There's three plans that need to work together. So in the last few months, they're working with IDHS, and there's also mitigation plan. And I want to have that agreement ready for you, because there is a grant coming from FEMA to work to update that plan, and also the CE and P plan. I'm not gonna read all of those off to you, but all these plans work together, and it is a Bible. They're literally probably three to six inches thick, and it's gonna take long planning, but all three of these plans work together. And they need to be voted on, some of those by LEPC, and then they're presented to you for adoption and a resolution. Now, your mitigation plan, there has been a resolution on that, but I didn't see anything in their assigned agreement for your hazmat plan with our tier-two groups. That needs to be implemented. So that will be coming to you. On December eighteenth, when we went down to conference, we talked about cybersecurity. So I did sign Josh and I up for the December eighteenth platform, for, through IDHS. That is, we need to watch that. So that's all part of a grant process of moving forward with numerous items. Any questions on those? I know it's a lot, I barely understand some of that stuff, so. And then one last plan, the Myra and the SPR has been a little challenging, but that was finally submitted last week. And we've been working with a couple other counties in District Two that there seems to be a problem with that as well. But as the collaboration continues, I think all of the counties together for District Two will push that and be a strong force again to its adequate and correct coverage. One thing on the eight-hundred system that I'll fall back on, I do know a lot about communications. Yesterday, we had an issue with the tower at two hundred south and State Board of Twenty-Five that is operated by IPSEC. They rent that. For redundancy, I'm gonna ask them to piggyback on our three-hundred-foot tower. And it seems like every ten to eleven months, that tower site loses power, and then we lose communications totally. And the interoperability attack channel did not work. They were up and down, so we need redundancy, if the county's gonna go to total eight hundred. So with your permission, I'm gonna include you on that letter to the state communications. I never love seeing that. And last but not least, we hired two folks for nine-one-one. One is a full-time, he is bilingual, and the other one is part-time, who will work twenty-four hours a week. That will come out of the twelve-twenty-two funds. We do have nine part-time positions, and we will have her trained and prepared if we do lose somebody to move right in. I have seventy-five applicants from Indeed, I'm not gonna lie, it did take me a month to go through those. And we had our second interviews last week with approximately twelve of those, and they were all very good applicants. I didn't even pass one on to the EMS. I wish I could have hired them all, but still have that type of feasibility, and it's great qualified people from Fulton County. So and last but not least, Brian, do you sit on the wage committee?
Just counsel.
Just counsel. I know the wages come, or supposed to be recommended from the commissioners to council. With that being said, giving it a year, because of the surrounding counties, and you might have seen the sheriff's department hiring, and when we post our salaries and look at surrounding counties, we have to retain our longevity and our people that we invest in. So nine-one-one Fulton County, about five years ago, we were up here, and I usually don't have a high turnover rate, but I don't want to be the other end where I get down here and I'm trying to train eight or ten people. I can't afford to do that, I am twenty-four seven, I have to have somebody in the seat. So I don't want to speak on the other responding agencies, and I'm pretty sure, you know, the sheriff, as well as his jail staff and my, maybe come to the table. We need some kind of a goal to work towards for the appropriate wages and get that census from surrounding agencies of what they make. So I will request that at the beginning of the year, maybe meet with the commissioner first. Brian, if you do that with the other policy and stuff, and then move forward to the wage committee. And probably Dave, because he sits on my boards.
Do that?
That's all I have.
Any else you'd like? I'd just say you've done a great job, but I know you've had some last-minute curves thrown from the state. Sitting there with you at those meetings, and it's, you've done a great job, Gail.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Why, missing department heads? Well, department head, department head, I'm not, yeah, okay. Jerry's not back there, is she?
No, she's busy, she's busy.
Okay. Then make some soil water, yeah? Good evening.
Good evening. I have this, and this is updated because I got a budget to me yesterday. So, um, a big, big update. We applied for a CWI grant in Oregon, and it was for part-time staff and education trainer in education supplies. In our office, we are currently, there's two... Three of us in two rooms. So we're trying to expand to that into another room within the same building. So we'll probably have to be ready for that. So what we're proposing, for one, is our budget line items, which was for rent to be continued to the next bu, next year's budget. If we can keep that there, does that make sense? If we can keep that there. And then on the Fulton County appropriation, I have an appropriation contract. Soil and water conservation districts within this county and the other surrounding counties, they get their funds appropriated, like a draw, like spring draw or fall draw, instead of going through the auditors, because I report to State Board of Accounts, and Christina reports to the State Board of Accounts, so we're both double reporting to State Board of Accounts. Does that make sense? Oh, I have one for her.
Yeah.
Sorry. So to save you guys money and time, we were wondering if we could do this on this other counties. Per the ISDA, Sandra Hopper is my district support specialist, she was unable to make it, but she will be there at the county council as she's willing to take in calls.
I guess I'm a little confused. So you would take it, you would take a, you said like a spring draw on a fall draw, six months, like six month period draw?
Yeah, just over our budget line items, because what's happening now is, say, I buy the State Board, I'll just first pop the supply, State Board. I report to my board and to State Board of Accounts that I bought that State Board. And then I send it to Christina, who reimburses the district for it, and she reports the same thing to State Board of Accounts over that State Board. So we're double reporting. Does that make sense?
Yes.
And so that's a lot of time of my time spent reporting to Christina, when we're doing the same job, pretty much. So the question is, would you guys be willing to just appropriate what you're, you're giving us? The six thousand, two hundred and eighty-five dollars for our budgeted, like our rent, office supplies? Could you guys do a draw instead of your auditor's office?
If that money goes into your fund, and then you use it in your light items of your budget, you've got it already there.
Yeah, yeah. It's still going towards the same budget line items, it's just not double reported on both. I just think it's saving the county time and money, and it's saving us time and money.
And we put you in sync with the other counties as far as what you do.
Yeah, yeah.
And the other counties don't do this?
The majority of the other counties do this, yes. It's just, we're a special district, so we have to report to State Board of Accounts. We don't get out of it because of how we're designed.
You see, I mean, it's kind of, it's kind of...
This is what I get all the time from my job, it's just how it goes, because we're special, it's a special district.
It's more of a council.
Yeah, these are blessing, it's more of a council thinking.
Yeah.
It's, it's their show, so I guess I'm okay.
So it takes it out of the hands of the government, is what it does.
Yeah, it's just, it's, yeah. Just different reporting, it just gets her, her true draw.
I think as long as it gets reported and everything, it's all...
It's all getting reported, yeah. It's just saving you guys time and it's saving us time.
I mean, I'm okay, like I said, it's a council. Pete. Pete Titan. Because then they deal with budgets, so.
Right.
That would be more of their...
Okay.
Yeah, I take the councils all right, they got, I mean, I'll...
Yeah. Yeah.
Okay, and are you guys okay with what I haven't spent this year to be draw over to the next year?
Well, now, that's, that's a different, yeah, that's your encumbrances. So, you're gonna have to eat, to roll it back over, you're gonna need a contract of some sort.
You have to have it allocated.
Yes.
Okay.
You already have to have something.
You have to invoice.
An invoice or a contract.
And that has to be.
It has to be spent in a way you see a bill or invoice for.
Okay. I'm all new to this.
You're fine.
So, just, we're good. I'm sorry.
Oh, you're good.
This is all new to me, so.
It just has, you give the money, you have that, you have that project for having invoice so we can appropriate the encumbrance for next year.
Okay, okay. So, then do I have your basis blessings presented to the council?
Yeah.
Thank you guys.
You're good.
It's a continual word.
Yes, thank you.
So, do I miss any other departmental entry?
Thanks, guys.
Okay. We have resolution two zero two three eleven twenty. It's a resolution Fulton County Board of Commissioners, so the county of Fulton, Indiana, establish meeting times for twenty twenty-four. Whereas Fulton County Commissioners have established that they will meet on the first and third Mondays of each month at nine AM and six PM respectively in the Commissioner's meeting room in the Fulton County Office Building, with the exception of when a holiday falls on the first or third Monday and other special circumstances as necessary. Whereas Fulton County Board of Commissioners have established times and set forth under Indiana Code thirty-six dash two dash two dash six. Now, therefore be resolved by the Fulton County Commissioners, that one. Fulton County Commissioners have established that they will meet on the first and third Monday of each month at nine AM and six PM respectively and other special circumstances. In the Commissioner's Room, Fulton County Office Building located at one twenty-nine East Ninth Street, Rochester, Indiana, two. If there is a Monday holiday, the Fulton County Commissioners will meet on the following business day, three. The year in meeting will be held on the last business day of the year at nine AM, four. If any meetings are scheduled, public notice will be given. Any questions on that? Do you want to entertain a motion to approve resolution two zero two three one one two zero?
So, live?
Second. Okay, we have a DNR Dan report, if you guys.
You got a copy of that, right, John? You didn't? You should probably give one. Now, why don't you give me a minute? I'll come back to it. That way you can look it over and see if PC's anything better.
Okay, did you send it to me, huh?
I, yeah.
Hey, you guys had a chance to look over the travel authorization request?
Yep.
Any concerns, questions? Do you want to entertain a motion to approve those?
All right.
Uh, you guys had a chance to look at the minutes for November third and November sixth. And entertain a motion to approve those except for December. You guys had a chance to look over the claims. Any questions, concerns on the claims? Okay, we have, uh, the jury pay, four thousand one hundred and ninety-one dollars and seventy-eight cents. You have the tourism claim, four thousand seven hundred and seventy-four dollars and seventy-five cents. We have miscellaneous claims of November twentieth, two hundred and seventy-two thousand seven hundred and eighty-three dollars and eighty-three cents. We have lid distribution, seven hundred and thirty-three thousand fifteen dollars and nine cents. We have utilities, twelve thousand three hundred and eighty-six dollars and ninety-six cents. And payroll for eleven seventeen, two hundred and ninety-four thousand sixty-seven dollars and forty cents. Payroll deduction of a hundred and eighteen thousand six hundred and nine dollars and eighty cents. We have the wheel surtax for September, fifty-three thousand two hundred and ninety-eight dollars and ninety-seven cents. Transfers, you guys look those over. Any questions on those? Okay, we have a transfer from the circuit court. Twelve hundred and six dollars from computer maintenance to wall books. Superior Court, uh, from copper supplies and printing to contract of one thousand six hundred and twenty-nine dollars and ninety-six cents. We have courthouse annex, thirty dollars for trash removal to building repair. We have courthouse annex, five thousand dollars for snow removal to utilities.
That's not what it costs now.
Drains hurt, didn't it?
Yes, I did.
No, your drains board, a hundred and sixty-seven dollars from legal published to a legal consultant. We have commissioners, two thousand dollars from exam records to bonds, cover security or charity bonds. And the surveyor, two hundred and twenty-nine dollars for the tires and tube, two, gas and oil. Just to bring up the funds for the account. We have courthouse, four hundred and fifty-five dollars for elevator maintenance to landscaping. Courthouse annex, one thousand four hundred and eighty-six dollars from elevator maintenance to landscaping. We have, uh. This was vacant industry and then building. Eight hundred dollars for building supply to the cleaning services, cleaning services funds are on. Any appropriations, questions?
No, that's a, that's a little confusing one there, but, yeah.
Tourism, um, for sixteen thousand three hundred dollars have been appropriated.
Is that our additional appropriation? Is that a request? Yes. We had submitted that back in October and it finally got publicized and is coming to you for a recommendation so we can pay out the rest. That inkeeper's tax had went up, and so our budget was decreased for twenty-three, but because of the increase of what has been brought in this year, that is our request for additional funds that are there in the account for us to pay out remaining bills that need to be for the end of twenty-three and start of twenty-four.
All right, thank you.
The highway department. Four thousand eight hundred and sixteen dollars for construction. Appropriate to cover the cost of sidewalk grant out at the museum. We have a highway for the.
Yeah, we've already signed that.
John, are you good?
Yeah.
Bridge report?
Good, good to me.
We have a two hundred dollar bill on top of that to, uh, top of that. We think we should do that.
So good?
I say.
Okay.
Any old business?
No, I guess so.
No, please, no. Public, whole business?
Yeah. Brian, I forgot one. I know. Can you check on a document that I was supposed to get a couple weeks ago?
Yeah. Yeah, that, that would be ration.
Yes.
And then, yeah, it's. Okay, anybody else, whole business? Any new business?
Pete, insurance. Wasn't there supposed to be something for insurance tonight on, for something she had working out with, I should call it that, with Brad for the insurance committee? I thought we was supposed to, I guess not.
There was, I don't think there was ever meetings, that there was just an update about what? What was it? The well, not the wellness program.
No, where, where you, one price, thirty-five dollars, and you can use the withlaw doctors for?
Yeah, but I don't know that we ever decided we needed, that we really need, we need to, I assume.
Okay, I didn't know. I ended up a little confused on that.
Well, I guess I'm with you. It was just, there was like an update of what was found out, but I don't, there was nothing about a suggested meeting, but that seems like the next step to me.
I thought Brad was supposed to come, maybe it was council meeting, maybe he was going tomorrow night to council meeting, but anyhow, okay. That's the ultimate question I have.
Cause I, I have, I talked with Phil a little bit, and I know she has a request coming to the council tomorrow night. A request, United Ministers, I believe, is coming for some, looking for some funding for their assistance program, not the food bank. It's only assistance.
Outreach, outreach.
Yeah, yeah, outreach. So, I mean, they have two, they have the food bank and the outreach, the assistance. So, I felt a little bit, I should kind of bring that up and her and I both agree if we're gonna help one, you know, for Fulton County, so. I don't know what the request is from the United Ministers.
They're out of funds for rent and living income things. That's what they're after.
But I don't know the amount, so I would imagine.
No, there's no amount been mentioned, but they're looking for funds.
I spoke with Brian Johnson, had him reach out to the other, other ministries, the other three. And everybody is doing well. I think Ackerman's Bond and Dunbar has maybe a little lead coming up. And so, um, suggested, I mean, to do it appropriate to their size, I mean, United Ministers is a larger, is one of the projects. So, if they wanna, it's a council decision, I think they need kind of a blessing for, they kind, I think Phil wanted to use some of the funds for that. I don't know if ARPA or to make the post school, like, you better spot.
But the ARPA funds still gotta come back to you, else if they decide to use them, is that correct? Okay, yep.
I mean, I'm okay.
Yeah, I'll give, yeah, I'm good.
I mean, it's, they, all these ministers do a great job. I mean, they, they help a lot of people. It's, it's nice to know that they're all, they're all fairly flush on the food banks. I mean, they're all, you know, so they're, they're doing good. And it's, it's, I think it goes a long way, shows the support our community has for these organizations. So, I mean, it's, it's really nice. They're blessed with a bunch of good people volunteering.
Yeah, I agree with you. We're gonna give it to one that need to give it, everything.
Yeah, yeah, right. So, okay, so.
We're gonna agree on that.
Yeah, okay. New business in the public.
No.
Okay, you're good?
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay, uh, I guess I entertain a motion to recess.
So good?
Second. All fair, motion carries clear.